I'd like to call the county commission work session to order for January 4th. Mr. Burgess, would you lead us in prayer, please?
Well, in prayer, Father, we thank you again, Lord, for this wonderful day that you allowed us to have, Lord. Father, we ask you now, Lord, to go with us through this meeting, Lord. Father, we ask you, Lord, to help us make the best decision, Lord, for this county that could be, Father. Father, we'd ask you to be with us tonight, Lord, that are dealing with this COVID, Father. Father, we ask, Lord, that you strengthen and comfort them, Father. Father, we'd ask you to be with ones going through trials and tribulations, Lord, Jesus, you know what their need is, Father. Father, we ask you now to lead our guidance, and we give you all the honor, all the praise, and all the glory, present your sweet and blessed and very most holy name to Jesus Christ with praise. Amen.
Amen. If everyone stands for the pledge, please.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let the clerk's call roll, please.
Yes, sir. Mr. Simkins?
Here.
Mr. Eby?
Here.
Mr. McElwain?
Here.
Mr. Beatty? Mr. Dawson?
Here.
Ms. Spicer?
Here.
Mr. Buckner?
Here.
Mr. Ellis?
Here.
Mr. Shepherd? Mr. Williams? Ms. Hayes? Mr. Reed?
Commissioner Beatty, was he able to answer? Because he is on the line. Did we get, were y'all able to hear him?
Oh, he's on? I didn't hear him, but, okay, so I'm gonna-
I want to verify that, make sure he is. You don't have him on at this point? Okay. If he joins later, we'll show him a role, but this time, absolutely.
Okay, okay.
Commissioner Shepherd called today, as well know, he's fighting a serious health problem, and he just did not have the energy to be here tonight. So, please keep him in your prayers as he fights his battle. First order of business is approval of the November 16th work session minutes. Have a motion for approval? Motion by Commissioner Hayes, second by Commissioner Spicer. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, vote by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Next item of business, committee reports. Any committees to report? Hearing none. The next item of business, elections, agriculture extension committee. There are some elections and reelections on that. Mr. Commissioner Simkins, I'll get it out here in a minute. Would you report, please?
Yes, I think we're gonna need, we're gonna lose one of the commissioners, Ms. Janet? Would you, would you like to address that, and then we'll go for mayor? How about that?
According to statute, the committee members can serve, the terms are two years, and a member can serve three consecutive two-year terms. And so Commissioner Buckner has completed his third two-year term and is not eligible to be reelected. And we've asked Dwight McElwain to fill that spot, and he has agreed. And then Tommy Nix has completed three consecutive terms, not eligible for reelection. Ronald Kimbrough has agreed to fill that vacancy if he's elected by the commission. And then Ms. Connie Hurd was elected back in the file to complete, to come in for an unexpired term left by Tamara Manley. And so Connie needs to be elected to her first full two-year term. And then eligible for reelection to a second term is Todd Berry. And reelection to her third term is Commissioner Becky Spicer. And then the other members are continuing on, Commissioner Simkins and Scarlett McMoon, so.
Thank you. This is to move these forward, these names forward to the regular sessions. That's a motion by Commissioner-
Make it motion.
Simkins, second by Commissioner Buckner. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, vote by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Next item of business, appointments on the planning commission, the appointments on that. These are reappointments of Mr. Harold Williams, Mr. Shane Chandler, and Mr. Gary Peeler. They're to be reappointed, and they've all chosen to serve again. So, we'll open the floor for a motion to move this regular session. Motion by Commissioner McElwain, second by Commissioner Dawson. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, vote by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Next order of business is new business. I'd like to pass out, I've got two different items here, and if y'all don't mind. Oh, good. It wasn't just me, then. I don't know if I figured all right out. The first thing that's being passed out, and I want to have two handouts for you, but the first thing that's being passed to you right now, it's the expenditures over the COVID-19. As y'all recall, well, most of you, and if you don't, I know some of you new here, back when COVID hit, we put together a package to help our community. And in that package, the county commission set aside $394,000 from the 172 fund, the hotel motel tax fund, to do several and various things over there. That expired on December 31st as a resolution intended it to. And so, just to go over you with on this first page here, it shows total expenditures, and it did go over to fiscal year. So, let's watch it broken out this way. The first is government operational expenditures, $64,495 in FY 1920. And then government operational expenditures for FY 2021, for $25,558, for a total of $90,053. The next category is, is community contributions and donations. In fiscal year 1920, we did $167,000. And in 202021, we did $4,200. You'll go over and see the total on that was $262,000 of the $394,000 designated. So, in this money alone, you see, we have about $131,000 that was budgeted, it was unused on that, which is good, because our job was, I think, was to help the community, and it was done by the number of people and businesses we helped, by the number of dollars we spent. You may have noticed, we put it out, and we'll get you a notification on that. We have the fourth lowest unemployment rate in the state of Tennessee right now. We have almost 97% of the people in Dixon County have a job. And that's, we're only just a few numbers behind Cheatham County, which is number three at the third lowest. So, we're very pleased. And I think what that speaks to is, one, the diversity and strength of our economy in Dixon County. Manufacturing is the largest part, but it only amounts to 20%. We have other sectors that break that up. And so, we can absorb different things when they occur, which we did well. The dollars on this, it speaks to the financial strength of Dixon County government, because we had the funds set aside for a rainy day. These came out of the hotel motel tax community development fund. We have roughly $14 million in our fund balance, in our general fund. We haven't had to touch that, and that's good. That's there for the really rainy day, the, I guess, the monsoon. But we've weathered that pretty good. We broke it down on the government operations, so you can see basically what all the money went to and what was spent. Were the class barriers, cleaning supplies, tents, disinfection, disinfection services, mobile virtual technology we're having to use, such as what we're doing here today, and there's some miscellaneous. The other one we really got to help folks on was community contributions. The help center, food donations, hygiene supplies, $41,000. We had more money available then, but the good news is, they did a good job, the help center, not only from the giving we did, but from what the community gave. And that's really what it is, a community-driven deal, to the point where they told us they didn't, about the middle of this, probably over in October or so, they said they really didn't need our help anymore. And so, we had, that's where a lot of that money was available. The other, the next one, obviously the biggest one, was the Dixon County Chamber of Commerce grant that we joined with the city of Dixon on, where we gave a small business grant through the chamber to businesses, most of them are retail, to help them get through this time. White Bluff chose to do their own, so we just gave the friends of White Bluff Group $15,000, let them handle it themselves. The Dixon County Community Clinic contribution, Commissioner Shepherd asked about that. They said they were seeing a lot more folks during that time. So, that's that $5,000 contribution. And then the last was refrigeration, trailer rental and fuel. We had to rent coolers. Martin Brower donated their vehicle. We had to rent some freezers and stuff, because we were bringing in so much food. There was no facilities here in Dixon County big enough to hold that. So, that's where the community contributions came on that, so that's $171,000. But of the money y'all designated, $131,000 is unused. It's still sitting in the hotel motel tax, the 171 fund. And that's, if something happens, we're already got a head start, if we have to do it again next time. I'm going to hand you out another one here, because I have a recommendation I'd like to make to y'all, but I'd like to get your input before we come to the next meeting. The, what this is, above and beyond what Dixon County did, we held our own pretty well. But as you recall, during the last fiscal year, the state of Tennessee gave us roughly $1.1 million, $1.1 million to use as we saw fit, because of the, it really started before the COVID issue, but they released the money and gave us a really carte blanche on how to handle that. What we did, as y'all recall, we did the budget last year. We took that $1.1 million and put it in road paving. So, that was money the state of Tennessee gave us the last fiscal year. So, the, Mr. Burgess and his group, they're paving inside the budget he's working on right now, an additional $1.1 million. Then again, we just approved last month an additional $2 million. So, he's got about $3 million more dollars he typically had to pave, and that's good, because we had no use for the money for any other reason at this point in time. But from this page, you'll see that the state of Tennessee, because of COVID, they had expenses they set aside for us in the total that they gave Dixon County for $801,000 on this. What they looked at were reimbursable expenses, but most of it, about $560,000 of that was payroll. Even though we paid our people out of our funds, we didn't have to take any extra money, the state of Tennessee gave us that money too. So, we had that money on top of what we, what we, what we had. So, it's sitting right here. So, the total reimbursed funds was $801,000. The total spent on COVID this fiscal year is only $29,766. We had no real big expenses left out of that. So, as you can see, our remaining funds from the reimbursement, we have $771,000 set aside for that. So, between the 771 on this page, and on the first page I gave you, the $130,000, we're right at the tune of about $900,000 on the COVID deal that we have money available on. But I didn't want to count that other money, because that was in hotel motel tax. It was purely Dixon County money coming from our taxpayers. But this came back. We have $771,000. During the COVID deal, when it first started in March, April, and May, and we had to react to act quickly, we did a lot of things, and I think we did a lot of things right. But one of the things we did do was, if we worked with all the elected officials and department heads, and we sent people home that could either work from home, or we split schedules where we had people working Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and the others on a Tuesday, Thursday, and vice versa. The good thing was, during that period, every Dixon County employee was paid. Nobody missed a paycheck. And I'm especially proud of that, because that was a, that's a tragedy that came up, but it was not of anyone's making. But we were in good shape to manage that, and proud we did. But during that time, of 325 employees in Dixon County government, there were 139 employees that came to work every day, because their jobs were of the nature that they couldn't take time off. They relate their four groups that they were in. The first is the sheriff's department, including the jail. The other was the ambulance service. And the other we had was the emergency management agency, and then Mr. Hodges for the highway department. He was the one that was constantly on duty there. So, we had 139 people that worked and worked hard and helped keep things going in county government. So, what I would like to do, what I was hoping to do, but I didn't want to bring anything to y'all until we had a good book, closed number on these books this year to take a look at it. Of those 139 people, I would like to, and these are not management, these are frontline people. Of these 139 people, I put two options down there. From this money remaining from the state, if we were to give a pay supplement, a one-time pay supplement of $750 to these 139 people, that would cost $104,250, and it would leave us with $667,000 of the state money. The other, for your consideration, is, is doing the same thing, except leave us with $632,900 on that. So, that's what I'd like to discuss with y'all tonight, and if you want to do either of these or none of these. But I'd recommend it, because we have people that never miss a day. And they were frontline people. It was your deputies, it was your jaders, it was your EMTs, your, all the other first responders, all the people at EMS, and Mr. Hodges out there. So, I would like to propose we do this, but I'd like the discussion to be, if y'all so feel, which figure you think y'all feel more comfortable with, and I'll open the floor for discussion. Commissioner Dawson?
Yes, sir. My first question is, volunteer fire departments involved in this?
Excuse me?
The volunteer fire departments involved in this?
No, this is full-time employees. These are Dixon County employees.
Can I ask why they weren't involved in it?
Because we don't pay volunteer fire departments. This is for Dixon County employees.
It'd be nice if we bought them some equipment. One of them needs equipment. I mean, you know, and they out there struggling. I mean, they struggle all the time trying to buy equipment, do this and do that. It'd be awful nice if you figured it in.
Well, what I think we ought to do is, in my opinion, I'm talking about a pay supplement now. If you have some other suggestions, let's bring that as a separate item.
Well, if you give them the pay bonus, you still got $632,000 or $667,000 left. So, I mean, you know, I'm just saying that it would be nice to, you know, get with them and see what they need, and maybe turn it in.
Be glad to look at that, but I do, again, it's the will of the commission, it's your vote. But my goal here is to try to take care of Dixon County employees right now. I don't mind coming back and discussing any other issue you have, but that's my goal now. But the floor is open for discussion. If you'd like to make that motion, that's fine. Commissioner Simkins?
You know, at this time, this COVID thing's not over, and it could get worse. I'm okay with, with the essential workers like you have planned here. But at this time, maybe we ought to just keep it at option one, until we see how this plays out, because we may need, need some more money. And then, again, just like Commissioner Dawson says, if it works out where we can help volunteer fire or something like that, maybe that may be the route we ought to take.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Is that, is that all, like, all the deputies?
It's all frontline deputies. The only people not included is management, management being captains and the chief, chief deputy and the sheriff.
Got you, got you. I would be for the $1,000.
Okay. Any other input? Okay, we had discussion, so I guess at this point, need a motion for either one or two. Commissioner Reed?
I'd like to make a motion that we give them the $1,000.
Motion by Commissioner Reed, second by Commissioner Hayes. Any discussion? Any discussion? This is not concrete tonight. This is to move it on to the regular session. So, if there's no discussion, all in favor, vote by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Mr. Dawson, on the other part, Mr. Fisher, we think has COVID. He'll be out for a week, but I'll have him get with you, so y'all can talk about those different circumstances. Thank you. Next item of business is budget amendments, all school funds. Our board of education representative tonight is Dr. Danny Weeks.
Good evening, commissioners. I think we'd sent the budget amendments to you December the 17th or 19th, and we had two amendments that were approved by the board. The first one is the purchase of school buses. We talked to you in depth about that during the budget, budgeting process. Our amount for those buses is $675,000. We proposed taking that out of fund balance. Our second amendment is simply the recording of some revenue from a storm that we had around the tornado time back in March. We received a little over $1.9 million in insurance funding to come into us from our insurance carrier. And we'd like to record that as revenue and record the expenses under capital outlay, which is a wash. Dollars coming in, dollars going back to spend that out. So, it's $1.906145 is the exact dollar amount. You saw that in the email. And that would be a balanced budget amendment totaling $2.581,145,000.
Dr. Weeks, on the $1.9 million, and I apologize, I wasn't able to talk to my finance staff in detail today. The $1.9 million on insurance recovery, was that money accounted for in fiscal year 1920 or 2021?
It wasn't settled until this year.
Okay, but you spent the money? I mean, what are we doing?
It's mainly spent this fiscal year. It was, insurance carriers went back and looked at the roofing at Charlotte Middle School, Creekwood High School, and some roofing and some outdoor property we had at New Directions Academy. So, it's coming out of, it'll be this fiscal year's expenditures. Creekwood High School, Charlotte Middle School, New Directions Academy.
Well, with the insurance funds coming back, I mean, that, did that, but you received those this fiscal year?
This fiscal year.
Okay, so it did reflect on your budget, or on your, shoot, what do you call that thing? Audit?
Correct.
Dr. Weeks, and again, I haven't, we received our audit. The school fund balances up a good bit, and we'll be able to report more to you on that the next deal. But the funds are there to do what he needs to do right now on this. So, but ask Dr. Weeks any questions you'd like.
Yes, I was just wondering, do we know what the fund balance is now? Why not?
We do. But I, do you, I don't have it in front of me. I'd be guessing that number.
I'd guess-
Was it 12 million roughly?
I was thinking it was closer to 13, but, in that neighborhood, 12, 13 million.
We have, and again, I don't want to get us off a tangent, but we need to do an analysis of that. But at first blush, this is fine, as far as we're concerned. Mr. Hall, myself, and Ms. Young need to sit down next, this week actually, before she has a baby and get all this figured out. Her assistant budget director is quite pregnant right now, so we're trying to work her, get all the work out of we can before she leaves. But the funds are there and available now, but feel free to ask Dr. Weeks any questions.
I have a question about the buses, the bus to bus. Will that still be needed with the idea that we, students are not going all day, every day? All students are not going all day, every day. And I realize that's easy, and you don't have, not tonight. Will that still be needed?
Yes, ma'am. Regardless of, you know, which students are in school each day, those buses have to make those same trips and those same routes down those same roads. So, you know, today, we may be going by your road and picking up every student. Tomorrow, we may be picking up every other student or name, last names as we group. But, you know, it's, it's one of those kind of fixed overhead costs. You know, we have to run buses regardless of who gets on there. Same thing with a lot of our utilities. You know, we may see some savings in, in water usage, but in terms of electricity and gas, you know, heating and electricity is going to be about the same to heat or cool buildings. It may not be as much water used and things like that, but, you know, there's so many costs that are just fixed like that. Thank you.
I have just a few questions. I know me and Mr. Reed here, we weren't involved in the budget process. I don't know as much as some of the other commissioners, but I know your fund balance, the 12 million, but you were using, I think, four, four to five million out of that for this fiscal year. Is that right?
Yes, we had set aside to, to help balance our budget. We had used, we'd shown on paper that we were going to approximately use 4.5 million, I think it's $4.5 million to hold in terms of balancing those dollars. A lot of times, that's offset by the amount of revenue that we do receive. And I think that's, I think that's what the mayor was referring to. As our fund balances, I think the paperwork that we showed last year is probably closer to $9 million at the end of the year, while we were going through the budget, until the audit was actually performed. We knew we were going to receive more income. We knew we were not going to expend all the expenditures. So, therefore, when the audit comes through, that's when our fund balance is so much higher.
So, do you still expect, though, I mean, at this point halfway through the year, do you know if you're still going to be using four to five million out of your fund balance?
In the nine years that I've been director of schools, we've only dipped into our fund balance one time like that. We've always had to show it on paper because of where the, how the audit falls. But again, I think we've got a pretty good track record and a pretty good history of not doing that. Even though to make the balance, even though to make the budget balance on paper at the timing that we're required to present a budget and the timing that the state requires our budget to be submitted, we will probably always have to do that, show that. But I think, as Mayor Ross said, when you see the audit reports, I think you'll always be very pleased with the schools' funds.
So, but the school buses were, they were left out of this budget on purpose then?
Yes.
Is that something you typically have every, every year, so many?
I would say we've done that probably three out of the last five.
Any other questions, Dr. Weeks?
Mr. Weeks, these buildings, you're talking about the roof and everything, is that completely replaced on the roof, or is it just?
No, sir. It was mainly replacing hail damage. It was, it was not the tornadoes that went through right pre-COVID, but it was, it was a spring storm that went through about that time.
And how much do you say the total of what?
$1,906,145. That was the insurance settlement.
That's your insurance settlement?
Yes, sir.
Is that going to cover it?
Yes, sir.
It will?
And again, that's going to cover repairs. That is, that is not re-roofing each of those buildings.
Yes, I got a question, not on the amendments, but I'm just wondering, are our school teachers being vaccinated for the COVID? I mean, we hear so many stories of, you know, it's available and nobody's getting it, and I'm just wondering, are we on some kind of program to get our school teachers vaccinated?
Yes, sir, we are.
If they want it. Now, I know all of them may not want it.
No, we, we are certainly not in a position to require that to happen, but we, we met with Commissioner of Education and Commissioner of Health today. We, we have to make a decision of whether or not we'd like to get in line at the health department. We, teachers are under group 1B, which, there's a 52-page plan, Mr. Simkins, of how the state plans on vaccinating everybody. And of that 52 pages, teachers are in group 1B. They have told us that could be as soon as the end of the month, maybe your first week of February. They also, since we have a medical advisor, and since we have a medical staff, they have told us if we would like to use our own staff and the county clinic to vaccinate our own staff members, that we could sign and request that. And they would send the vaccine directly to our school clinic, as well as to each one of our schools that have that licensed nurse there, and we could do it that way. We're discussing pros and cons of both of those. But if you had to ask me today, we would probably do it ourselves rather than wait on the health department.
I was just concerned about that. I might say if they want the vaccine and it's available now, it could be-
Absolutely. We've been told, you know, and I, there are two different vaccines. There's one that has to be kept at the ultra-low temperature. And certainly, we don't have any capabilities of keeping that or delivering that. But the second virus vaccine, we can keep in our clinic. We can vaccinate our employees either after work hours or during the planning times for those people that are in close proximity to our clinic, or on school site for those teachers and staff members that are there located in the buildings. And again, we- And again, we, I think we have, we were given about a week to make that decision. Yes, sir. Thank you for asking.
How long, how long do you think you'll be on this hybrid schedule?
Uh, we.
I got an idea, I know you probably want to give us the numbers.
We, we projected until the 22nd so families could plan and just, you know, it's, to me, it, it is so much more of a benefit to our community as we, you know, give them a three-week period of time so they can look and see, take care of babysitting, take care of arrangements and things like that. So usually, the Health Department has projected a, a two-week after an event spike in cases. So, you know, the two-week spike after Christmas would take place next week. We'll look at numbers of cases that have been reported to us in both staff and students and then we'll try to make that decision.
Well, if you could, I, I appreciate you bumping up, we're having keyboard right here.
Help them do their homework.
One more question.
Yes, sir.
Did y'all receive any COVID money or do you anticipate in a new stimulus, receiving any funds for?
Yes, sir, that, we received some preliminary information from the Commissioner of Education today. Again, that's, that's going to be rolled out. She said over the next two and a half, three weeks, we would get details and specifics on what that might look like. This will be what they're calling ESSR funds, stimulus dollars, they're calling this ESSR 2. The ESSR 1 was taken care of in terms of reopening priorities, helping us buy a lot of the same things that the county bought, masks, cleaning supplies before the state decided to buy those for us, things of that nature. And the majority of that went into technology that, that both our students needed, our staff needed and the community hotspots that are, that are throughout the county.
Well, I also saw an article in the Tennessean that Governor Lee was not going to withhold any less funds from the BEP fund. And I think I recall maybe the, the population went down and y'all were going to lose a million dollars. Do you think that she may get that million dollars or, or have you heard that or?
That, that is the topic of the special legislative session and it's supposed to happen 18th, 19th of the month, so.
So we may be getting some more money then hopefully.
It, it'll hold us stable. It, it, you know, if, if we, right now, I think we're about 600 students down from last year. Some students, some families decided to homeschool, some carried them to some private schools or online schools and things like that. So in terms of BEP numbers, our, our daily membership, our daily attendance has decreased about 600 students and again, that's around $7,000, $8,000 a child. And so if the, if the special legislative session goes as we expected to and was hoping it would, we'll be placed on a hold harmless, they'll give us the same funding that we would have received, actually with last year's BEP numbers. And again, that, that's a positive for us. It's, it's not a windfall by any means because just, just as we had that discussion with Commissioner Hayes earlier, you know, buses have to go down the same road regardless if, if 300 students or 200 students are, are homeschooling, the buses still have to go there, we still have to heat and air condition and clean those buildings and provide insurance for the buildings, mow the yard, you know, so a lot of those costs are still fixed. It, it will save us from cutting some positions, we hope, and we also hope it'll save us from eliminating jobs that, that could be borderline and, and hopefully we won't have to increase any class sizes because of that. We hope, hope it'll just kind of maintain that status quo in terms of delivery of services.
I know at one time you said it was about 76% of children and other 20% of children being homeschooled.
Yes, yes. We, we allowed families the option to change it at midsemester. And we had 380 students who were learning at home from their computers, decided to come back to school, they didn't, they didn't like it. And interestingly enough, we had about 200 students that were in school that wanted to go out and go the other way. So we had a net of, of, close to 250, 280 or so coming back in and so we're glad to see that. We're, we're particularly proud, that was a lot of younger students, kindergarten, first, second, third graders that, that we believe learn best in front of a teacher in school while they're learning those foundational skills. So we're very pleased with that number. And again, we, we respect the parents' choice to do what they think is best for their child. But, but again, to, to see those younger students coming back, that was, that was refreshing to us, see those numbers coming back.
I want to bring us back to the budget amendments. Any questions on those? Hearing none, up on the floor for a motion and a second to send us on to a regular session. Motion by Commissioner Evie, that's second. Second by Commissioner McElwain. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, vote with stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Weeks. Next item of businesses, budgets amendments, all funds except schools, Mr. Hall.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number three there, I don't specifically have any amendments myself here for budget item, or for item number three on the agenda, but what the mayor went over on item number one itself is a, is a budget amendment. And there may also be throughout the agenda tonight, another item, so that's why I had this added, so that it would cover any other items tonight that come about. So really what I need you to do is just approve this, or if I can get you to approve this and send it on to two weeks from now, this will cover any items. I may come back with some other ones specifically in two weeks, but you'll get those before the Friday before. Well, our actual meeting will be on Tuesday next time. But yeah, I kept, I put this on here so that would cover all items specifically covered tonight, so I don't have any specific item myself, but this will cover all items talked about individually tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Motion by Commissioner Simkins, second by Commissioner Butler. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, vote with saying, stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Next item business number four, copier leases for Dixon County Clerk Office, trustee UT Extension and Highway Department, Mr. Hall.
Let's see, this one here, I had a bunch of lease, copier leases come up at one time. Now this here, we, we did, we did bid out a copier lease in September for County Clerk Dixon Office on Main Street. And this here was Dixon Office Supply won that bid and we're going to use that bid for four other offices. This is also County Clerk for the Charlotte office here, UT Extension, trustee's office and the Highway Department. So it's going to be a piggyback, basically what it's called. They're all going to be the same, $99 per month for the County Clerk Charlotte office, UT Extension trustee. The Highway Departments will be 108 per month instead of 99 because they had an add-on item for a fax machine. They still have a use for a fax machine at Highway Department. So all that is, is a $9 add-on. It's $99, but the add-on will make that 108 per month and we are allowed to do that. So I need you to approve all of those and send those on.
How long?
60 months. We get the best price when we go 60 months, yes.
Commissioner Hayes?
And these right here are already budgeted, so these won't be in, included in any budget amendment, they are already budgeted for.
Motion by Commissioner Hayes, second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, vote with stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hall.
Thank you.
Item number five, 2021 Certified Road List, Mr. Burgess.
I guess Luanne sent y'all our certified road list for 2021 and y'all welcome, hope you all looked it over. We think it's as exact as can be and we're just asking y'all to approve it tonight.
Commissioner Ellis?
Is part of Bagat Lane not in the city limits down there? Where, where's it at? Because I see city trashcans all around that road.
Yeah, the lower end of it isn't.
But Sharon Drive's all in city limits, right?
Mm-hmm.
It can't be very many feet then.
No, it's not.
And it's got to be on one side of the street.
We're hoping they'll take it in, but we know the city.
Any other questions? Commissioner Evie?
When is the paving project going to start?
Mine should open back up sometime in March. Right now they're shut down, but it should open back up sometime in March.
Any other questions?
If that road list is probably going to take you the rest of the year, I guess we're off to the summer or whatever.
I don't know, we knocked the biggest part of it out right now. We got some we're going to bid out because some of them are bigger roads and we're going to bid them out and we're going to bid them by the ton like the city does.
Up on the floor for a motion for approval. Motion by Commissioner McElwain, second by Commissioner Butler. Any other questions, concerns? Hearing none, all in favor, vote with stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Item number six, speed limit reduction of Lakeview Acres, Mr. Burgess.
All right, I thought it was going to sit down. Yeah, I think Ms. Hayes brought this up, Lakeview Acres, they're wanting to reduce the speed limit out in that little subdivision. After we paved out in there, they're having trouble with the speeding and I told them they had to bring it before y'all, that we can't just go out and lower it ourselves. So it had to be brought before the commission, y'all had to vote on it.
What speed limit you want it lowered to?
Could I ask, Todd Christensen, what brought it up today, what do you recommend?
25 or 30, you know, if we could get it posted, then we could get the Sheriff's Department to run out to there and enforce it for us, but the issue is, is my, my two daughters almost got hit by a car after they paved it and I'm grateful that they did pave it, but they, they almost got hit by a car that was speeding through there. So I think that if we can get some signs out there, then we can enforce it. With it not being signed is unenforceable.
It's a very small area because part of Lakeview Acres is in Vermont, city, part of it's in Dixon, city, and this is the part that's just in the ham, so we're not going to have here. And as long as it was paved, there was no problem, nobody could speed on it, but now that's your good paving job, the ham.
What speed would y'all like to do or you want Mr. Burgess' department to review it? Go out and take a look at it?
I think 25 is good, but yeah, he disagrees with you.
That's it, y'all?
Motion, we got a motion by Commissioner Hayes, let me go and get a second and then we'll go on some more discussion. That's second. Second, Mr. Reed? Okay, have a motion second. Yes, sir.
What's the limit in the city that was Dixon and Park? I mean, what's, is it going to be a conflict?
I think the city didn't, I think the city didn't say, Jackie, they had there the 20?
I believe there is a 20 miller speeding up there, I'll have to go ahead and check.
Yeah, and I don't know about what they got.
You know, if you had 20 on one end and 35 on the other end and 30 in the middle, it'd be kind of a, it needs to be.
It's likely uncomfortable, make it whatever the city wants, if it's already there.
Let's do that. You mind taking a look at that, Mr. Burgess?
No, I'd be glad to.
I have a motion as second to, Mr. Burgess, look at the reduction of speed limit out there, 25 if possible or match the city. Got a motion second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, vote with stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Burgess.
Thank you.
You can go now.
I'm waiting for a cake and ice cream.
No, no. Not, not this.
You ain't getting nothing.
No, I don't know what you, I don't know what you're talking about. No, you're out of order, you're out of order, I tell you that. Item number seven is magistrate, Mr. Rayton.
You may recall that back in December, we had our every-two-year resolution that approved the judicial commissioners for the next two years. Among the individuals that were approved was Mr. Terry Haynes. And following that vote, he communicated with the General Sessions Clerk, Ms. Leslie Shelton, and indicated that for some personal reasons, he was not going to be able to serve in that capacity. And so in response to that, the judge, Judge Mansu, exercising some authority that he has by statute, went ahead and made an emergency appointment to fill that spot with Casey Grove. And so what I discussed with the judge's office is, is that really that should come back for, he, he does have that authority to do that, but I think just to clean it up, it should come back before this body for you to take it up and vote on it. And so what you'd be passing along to the next meeting is a vote to confirm and ratify that Casey Grove will serve in that judicial commissioner spot that was vacated by Terry Haynes.
Up on the floor for a motion. Motion, Commissioner Evie, second by Commissioner McElwain. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, vote with stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Item number seven is something we discussed before, is naming the county buildings. Most county buildings have an official name, as we know, but because of the movement of the Justice Center and the, with it opening and with, in about the next 60 days, the opening of the, of the Dixon County Government Building where the library is, where we'll be able to move the county clerk and trustee over to that area, because of that, we've got, we, we walked back through this and we kind of talked to several y'all about it. If you need another one, I can pass one down, y'all. But what we were looking for on this was trying to get some clarity to what each building was, because, you know, we've, we've had things called annexes and courthouses and all kinds of different things like that, but kind of want to walk you through this list and we'll put it in resolution form next time. But to give official names, the Dixon County Administration Building, we intend on making these official on February 1st, would be the building we're in now, would no longer have a courthouse or annex to it because it's not a courthouse or annex, only the administrative offices, non-judicial offices are here. The Dixon County Historic Courthouse, it speaks for itself on that one. The Dixon County Justice Center and its address. The Dixon County Memorial Park is where we've moved the memorial over behind Old Jailer's House and we put a fence around that. We just want to designate what that park is over there, Dixon County owns that, where the city of Charlotte owns the Old Jailer's House. The next is Dixon County Sheriff's Administrative Office, which is clear, Dixon County Jail, obviously. The Dixon County Government Building, we've been calling the Dixon County Government Building the downtown building that we'll be auctioning off. We want to move that name to where the, the clerk and the trustee will be moving and the library is because it's truly a government office. It will probably get shorthanded as a library because that's one of probably the more prominent things on that, but we would like to, we're looking at the, if y'all's approval to name that just the Dixon County Government Building in Dixon. The Dixon County Maintenance Building, which already is Dixon County Health Department Dixon, Dixon County Health Department, White Bluff, Dixon County Solidways, Dixon County Highway Department, Dixon County Emergency Operations Center, and then Dixon County EMS Station Number Six, Fire Station Number Two, that's the West Iron Hill Station on that. So I submit those for y'all's approval. We've talked with a few of y'all and talked to several people out in different offices trying to make sure we have something that we give it clarity whenever they write something in the newspaper or we're trying to give an address of which court, because there's only really technically a, one courthouse now, the Historic Courthouse versus the Justice Center Administrative Building. So that's what we have here, but before we move on with that, I'd open anything for your input on that. Yes, Commissioner Evie?
What are we going to do with the courthouses in here?
Well, that was approved back when we did the borrowing to build the Justice Center, but the residual money we have left over here, well, is to redo this upstairs and move the assessor of property and the registered deeds upstairs, spread everybody out. We think we can squeeze another 40 years out, out of this building then. But we're, we've, we're talking to our architectural firm for the drawing, they did a basic drawing of that, we're talking to them. We're going to have money left over on the Justice Center Building, we do know that, but that was according to plan because we, we approved that in the resolution back when we approved the borrowing to build the Justice Center back in 2017? 17, 16, 17, 18, whatever. Yes, sir. Any other questions? Commissioner, yes, sir.
Mayor, what about, what would we call it, election office in Dixon County?
That's left off there, but we've simply called it Dixon County Election Office and we need to, we can add that to this.
I didn't know what it was in Dixon County, I guess it does.
No. We refer to it that way on internal documents, but we'll add that. Any other questions or input? Hearing none, up on the floor for a motion to move this on to a regular session. Motion by Commissioner McElwain, second by Commissioner Hayes. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, vote with stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Item number nine, accreditation overview, Sheriff Evans.
Sir, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Got Lieutenant Scott LaBasher, for those of you don't know him, gonna assist me a little bit here today with, kind of put this in the PowerPoint where I can kind of move quickly without, you know, and if you got questions, I guess you can stop me in flow, it's not a, it's not an extremely long presentation. So, are we ready?
Ready.
All right, I'm going to let you click, I'll, I'll. Y'all okay if I do this right here because I'm going to pass out? All right, I'm gonna let you click. I'll, I'll, y'all okay if I do this right here, because I'm gonna pass out from carbon dioxide. If I can get to preaching, the mayor and I have a deal, he'll let me know if I'm getting too long with it. So, what is accreditation anyway? Accreditation program, long known to be the maintaining the highest standard of professionalism within your area. With ours, it's law enforcement accreditation. It's a certification process by which independent peer review, some of y'all may be familiar with hospitals and colleges, that are some of the most well-known organizations that are required to maintain accreditation. And so, let me grab my water. So, for many years here in Tennessee, the only option was international accreditation, which is, i- it's a good program, but it's, it's, it's pretty expensive. I mean, there are all, there are a lot of benefits that I'll go into here shortly about why I believe we ought to take the sheriff's office through an accreditation program. But back in around 2010, the Tennessee Chiefs Association started a state accreditation program. And, and at the end of this, we can email you this presentation, y'all, if you want, or if you want to dig a lot deeper into it, it's, it's pretty important. I'm not gonna read every single word here, just kind of hit the highlights. But the Chiefs Association had, had, created, it has a board of directors, an accreditation board, and within that accreditation board, they assist agencies with becoming accreditation. It has a board, like I said, it has a board of directors. So, you can't just, nobody rubber stamps anything, so it is a true separate entity within the Chiefs Association. It's not, that, that is, boy, there's sheriffs on that board, as, as long as police chiefs and, and others. And so you'll see here a little bit, there are several sheriff's offices in Tennessee that are accredited, and I had a couple of these overview. This requires an in-depth review of every aspect of the agents, agency's organization, management, operations, and administration, to include establishing goals and objectives for periodic updating. Every general order of policy has to be reviewed annually by me and my staff and signed off on. That way you don't, you don't get some sort of archaic policy or procedure lying in there that's gonna come out later on, down the road, and it kind of bites you in the rear going, well, you know, we hadn't looked at that thing in five years, you know, so this way it, it, it demands that, that I sign off on every single policy procedure, as sheriff's office does, and it's reviewed annually. Another thing, reevaluation of whether the agency's resources are being used in accord with the agency's goal and objective admissions. So this is sort of an efficiency program within itself, to make sure we're allocating, not wasting taxpayer money on resources, make sure we can find a better innovative way to keep delivering those high-end law enforcement services to residents of Dixon County that we're doing so. It requires a lot of planning on our part, provides objective measures to justify decisions related to budget requests, personnel policies. It gets everybody communicating, gives citizens a yardstick to measure how effective we are, and corrects internal deficiencies and inefficiencies before they become big public problems, like I kind of touched on earlier. Another thing, it is connected in, through the state accreditation program, there are a lot of benefits to being in there. There's some annual costs in that, and I'll, I'll get to that toward the end. But they basically have a contracted, one of the top law enforcement attorneys in the country, that they continuously monitor for their clients. If there's a change in the U.S. Constitution, there's a Supreme Court ruling, the policies, the best practice policy and, and general orders that we use and adopt are reviewed in our consti-, U.S. Constitutional Sound, Tennessee Constitution, constitutionally sound. They're very, they're specific for Tennessee, and so this really makes them solid policies and procedures. The Dagle Law Firm out of New Jersey, the, the, I guess the founding attorney for that was a former marine, he was a state trooper for ten years, so he got his law degree. And his goal pretty much is going across the country and representing law enforcement agencies that kind of get in trouble. And not, not to, if, if an agency is, is found to be corrupt or have procedures that are dangerous to the public, are, are in very unconstitutional sound type activity, they go under what's called a, what's called a consent decree, right? And so it can take, so cities or municipalities, hard this guy, have them to get out, you have to work your way out of it. And so, we feel like being proactive, accreditation is very proactive, keeps you on the front side, so hopefully not in the backside, trying to catch up, and, and I'm sure Brian has told y'all a lot of things we do. We'd rather be proactive when it comes to legal stuff than reactive, because reactive's with the check start rolling, typically, so next. Now, I've probably touched on some of these. The big thing is staying up to date, providing employees with current and timely information to do their jobs. All right, and it's required to work within specific guidelines, and we must maintain compliance with standards set forth by the accreditation part that's administered by the state. And so, once you achieve accreditation, you're not done. Every three years you have to become reaccredited. And so, once you get ready for these independent assessors, inspectors, whatever you want to call them, they come in to see, because one of the things you gotta do, you have to prove that you're following your policies. You can't just say we're doing it. There are certain proofs required on those best practices standards that you have to put in there annually. And so, that is a, another good thing. Accreditation is a desirable award that symbolizes professional excellence and competence. It's not weird or saying we're doing this things, but we have an independent board that says, the Dixon County Sheriff's Office, or Dixon Police Department, or whatever credit agency is, we've inspected them, we're monitoring it, and these guys are, are doing the most update type of policing in your community that, that they can do, and, and we can prove it, so. And also assure state locally there's a quality of service being delivered by your law enforcement. I mean, I know I'm an elected official and I represent the people, but I like to be able to have a way to, to, to show and assure them that we are doing what we're supposed to be doing. And it's not just the sheriff up there making up policies and procedures that, that we are gonna get, you know, we are following national guidelines to, to make sure we are doing our services right. It, it can help with us prevent and control crime through a more effective and efficient delivery. One of those things is, you know, we get some training on what's called crime analysis. So data-driven law enforcement, that means, you know, what does the data say? You know, there's always public input, but we can use data a lot of times if, you know, same, I need a $2,000 piece of equipment to study speeds. Is there a speeding problem here? What's the data say? If it is, it may say, well, the best time to send a deputy out there is between, you know, seven and nine-thirty in the morning on Tuesdays and Thursdays. That's the most volume, that's when the speed is. So, we, we use modern techniques to encourage us to do that through our, 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 our policies and, and our general orders. A lot, often it increases the citizen's confidence in the policies and practicing of the agency, because their public record. They're open for public inspection, so we're not hiding anything, you know, because a lot of time, you hear people talk about transparency. With these policies and procedures, there's nothing, nothing to be ashamed of, you're showing, showing what you're doing. Creates a forum or partnership which the citizen and police work together to control, prevent crime. Partnership will help citizens understand the challenges and confront law enforcement. Some of this stuff you've heard, but through your general orders is your driving force, where, well, we'll get around to, to having that. Now, you, you know, because, you know, I sign off on, I, I gotta follow them, even though I'm the sheriff. So it, it helps, it helps in there. Kind of getting close to closing here, why is it important? The positive impact on insurance costs due to the fact that our current liability is L G I P, which views favorably a county's claim prevention efforts, so with steps like the ones we are planning on evaluated in the totality of the county's claim results and risk controls, that's a lot of wordage, but that came from them. It certainly helps to positively impact the contributions charged for insurance coverage. So, I'll break it down real quick like this. I, I reached out to our insurance carrier through Kyle Ruff, and I've got, I've got a letter here, mayor, if you don't mind, I'll pass it around. It'll be part, it's the last page on this. It's about as close to an endorsement for being accredited. Counties typically are insured a little bit different than municipalities. What it means in a municipality world, most of the municipalities in Tennessee are covered by public entity partners. Used to be the old, the POE risk assessment. What it means to them is, doesn't sound like a lot right here, but you'll, you'll see when I'm, there's discount on your liability insurance. And so, to give you a short belbene, it cost the, cost the city about seventy sworn officers. So that was, you know, about $1,500 a year, annual fee about pays for itself. The same thing I want to talk to you about it here is, we will need software program to run the program, because there's a lot of moving parts to, back, can you back to say that, that are state accredited? And you can see some of them up there. There's a sheriff's office in there somewhere, we think, y'all seen?
Sevier County Sheriff's Office.
Sevier County.
Williamson.
Buckingham County.
Williamson County just recently come on board, has been accredited, and while, yeah, Buckingham County, while LPG, Kyle couldn't give me an exact dollar amount, so I could show you that. What I want to show you is I want to gain your support. I'm not sure how we find the money in the budget, but to do this program, there, there are some costs to it. But I, I feel like they're very reasonable, and I feel like, after having the management is gonna, is gonna make our liability coverage a lot better as far as, as premium goes. A lot of times, sometimes you get premium discounts if you don't have a lot of loss, and so, but anyway, the, the system that, that to, to use is called Target. We can get in the system, and it's not, you need to look up a policy, and they got a smartphone or a laptop in their car, dealing with this a lot. What's, what's, what's our general order saying on this booth? They can get it, and so, it's really a subscription-based, and so being accreditation, we, we, we get a vast resource of these, these. So, here's the latest, greatest, y'all, thing, and like I say, I know I'm throwing a whole lot at you. This system is multi-layered, it has training in it, it does other things, and one of the things, with this policy, maybe just a five-question test, when the, when the deputy reads the policy, says they understand, then their knowledge base is tested, for excellence. That policy, go get it. You know, you had two weeks, so it's a, it's a management tool, because this will impact not just the sheriff, it'll impact the entire sheriff's office, a jail included. Now, the upside is, we are only charged, and so the state says it will cost us $1,150 a year, an annual fee for fifty-one to seventy-five sworn spots. And so, rebate towards your application fee for enrolling into a program such as this. I don't know if our current carrier's gonna do that. Kyle Ruff said he can get back with me. But I wanted to get this to you guys, and try to, try to help explain a little bit more. This is the cost annually for the software program. Like I say, there's no hardware with this, this is a subscription-based. They have a sole sourcing, because this is the system that the state accreditation unit uses. One thing that would come off after the first year, I know it's not a lot of money, y'all, but $250 this year, you don't need system if they'll need. And like I said, my costs annually were about $3,000 for the system, but then I only had twenty-five seats. And so this goes by seats, and we need enough seats to cover the jail, we call it. We pour everything into this, it's, it's this policy management system, and, and it's very user-friendly, it's easily searchable. So with the cost of the annual thirty-three a week, like I said, it'd go down just a little bit. And like I say, hopefully in a few weeks, I might have a dollar for training, safety, you know, to the point, because we had some archaic stuff going on, and like I say, I wanted to, to kind of get your guys blessing on it. I'm not sure exactly it'd be good for Dixon County residents, it'll be good for the sheriff's office, it'll be good for the county government, and accredited agency typically, six years ago, there might be twenty-five, thirty a month, and sometimes there's no changes. I sign off on it, but this software tracks that. It's something here, it was reviewed here. It's pretty much all I have on that, so yes.
Does that hit three, Mark?
Well, yeah. Once the policy, you know, once the policy's uploaded, there's a review process where we're not having to have twenty meetings a week to own this policy, we send that draft out, once it publishes it, goes out for training, it comes back. So there is some monitoring to it, but, you know, as far as, you know, if you try to do this with paper, you're gonna, you're gonna be, really the state only to do it. Plus, when it comes time for reaccreditation, they typically send out half the files electronically to the assessors. It's so, it's so you know it's not our neighbor that I'm buddies with that's assessing, but the, the software and all that works very well. Like I say, nobody can get in there and change it, you know, it's sort of like any other lot of programs that you might use. You know, you'd have administrative rights, sends it out, and, and for log, for training, you know, it's, you know, sometimes you're not a hundred percent. This way, everybody gets it, and like I said, stuff at two o'clock in the morning on their phone. I don't know if y'all have worked anywhere where you got a form, and then a year and a half later, it looks totally different, because somebody kept tweaking it. This way, we keep everyone.
Myself and Mr. Hall talked shortly before the meeting. The budgetary standpoint's fine, we know where you can get the money and all, but it's, that can be managed easily. I just wanted to let the commission know about.
And the other one, the other one is communication. That's what I love the community, so there are certain sections where, you know, we invite the public to come to the sheriff's office and weigh in on certain things of what they expect from their sheriff's office. So, that's a, a portion of that that I like about it. Thank you, mayor, for putting this on the agenda. Let me kind of come, and if you want to know more, you can call me. Y'all got my cell phone number, I'll make time for you, and like I say, we can, I think Lieutenant, I'll have him, if you don't mind, I'll just have him email you this presentation when I told him we wanted to pursue some accreditation.
What do you want, do you want to begin this right away, or at the beginning of fiscal year? When's your?
I would really love to, typically it's a, it can be a, about a three-year process. If you got good software and you hit the ground running, eighteen to twenty months, it can be. So I'd like to get started sooner than later, but I understand there's a process, Mr. Mayor, and I'm willing to.
Probably do then is, let Mr. Hall in with the program. We can make.
I'd be very appreciative. I think y'all be proud of us.
Thank you. Well, if y'all are fine with that, then there's, there's no need to vote on this, it'll be taken care of as amendment. The next, anything you want to go over on that tonight?
Other than just bring it to your attention, it's, it's concerns, the fire alarm system at the, the older part of the jail, if you will, the original part before it was built. I'm not a maintenance guy, but I'm gonna do, Bob Hester coached me up a little bit, so if y'all get mad, call Bob. Hester, not, not the mayor. It is the components, it has a brat with these, these folks to do repairs, and certain, you pull stations where you would pull a fire alarm, it has sensors, and some of the, mayor, by all means, we can dig down a little bit deeper, but they, a lot of these components, they don't even make anymore. Rebuild it or find a used one somewhere else, and these components do, do wear out. And it's not understanding that, of course, there's a buzzer that's been going off for a few weeks there. The system's sketchy, has the weather, you know, you know, that causes, the, the building's full of people in there. Correction, obviously they make a regular rounds, and, you know, if they smell something, there's still some areas where they say, yeah, it's around $26,000, like Mayor Riles said earlier. You know, you want to get several more years out of this building. You know, we've got several more years out of that jail, but the, the alarm system, which is not real simple, it's got sensors, we can't get parts.
Six thousand dollars repair, and I see a hand.
Yeah.
I don't have it here in front of me.
Here's what I got, mayor, this is the, this original, if you want to go through it, it, it tells. to, uh, go through it, it, it tells of some of these components falling off, the newer, you get so many point-os, yeah.
And you get Bob and Hester, and if the commissioner allow us, can we go and move this to regular session and allow, uh, myself and the sheriff come back with a recommendation on what to do, and motion by Commissioner McElwain, second by Commissioner Williams? Any discussion on this? Uh, and we'll try to get this to you, move this on regular session, vote by stating aye? Opposed? Thank you, thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you, guys.
Uh, one item to add, and it was something that Commissioner Buckner hit on a second ago, uh, the speed limit on Sanca Road, the new road they built, uh, going into the industrial park off Highway ninety-six that go, goes around, the, I guess, the SIA road from downtown? The, the speed limit is arbitrarily set at thirty miles an hour, because Dixon is at thirty, but after talking to the city of Burns, and us driving it several times, thirty is way too slow, because when you leave ninety-six, uh, uh, and heading south, southeast on New Sanca Road, forty miles an hour is good, you could actually drive fifty, I wouldn't recommend it, uh, but, uh, forty is good. Uh, the city of Burne turned off by the Lutheran Church down to the Dixon, and we do it, that we both agree to set the speed at the same thing to keep traffic moving at the correct rate on that. Uh, so what I'd like to do is, we'll find out what Burns did tonight, and if they agree to that, we'll bring it back to you on regular session, if there's no objection. Again, the city of Dixon, in my view, that's slow, I mean, that's, that's a forty mile to forty-five mile an hour road, maybe, maybe forty once you get where the road narrows back down at Old Columbia, but on the newer portion of the road, thirty is just, you, you can't drive that slow, there's no way humanly possible, so it's good. But I'd like to get a motion, all in favor, vote by stating aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Is there any other business being brought from the commissioners, Commissioner Hayes?
It's actually, I have two things, they're both equally important, and the first one is just provide people, especially, it's very easy to fill it out, and it's very simple, once you set up an account, you just log in every year and make any changes you need to. And, uh, it's very important to do it, it's for the ethics commission. About fifteen years ago, one of our commissioners didn't do it, and he ended, which is equally as important, tomorrow is Bob Rouse's birthday.
Thank you. And as I tell you every year for the last ten years, you're out of order, again, but I do qualify for social security starting tomorrow, but, uh, I'm gonna go and work a little while longer, but thank you for acknowledging. No, no, that's my birthday wish, don't say. Well, just social security at this point, I gotta, let's not, let's not get too carried away. Oh, me, that hurts. Uh, okay, I'm, I'm about to get the sheriff start leading some people out of here now. Anything, you, you never have anything, February first, two thousand twenty-one, at seven PM in the Beaufortale Booty Reed Junior County Commission Chamber of the Dixon County Courthouse, four courts square short.